My property, Mr. Yes, sir.
If you appreciate my followers, we thank you for this group again for this beautiful morning's day. And just thank you for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us and our city and everything. And we just ask you to direct us tonight in the agreement that we go forward in it and everything we do will be pleasing in your eyes. And as long as Jesus Christ.
Please just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank everyone who comes out tonight to our twenty-six council meeting. It's from Joe Paul, Chris is here, Jeff is here, Wendy is here, his suit is on the Zoom due to COVID. I was here, Franklin is not here due to block construction. I'm here, the chair is here, Ms. Virginia is here, and Prime Minister is here, also. All right, uh, with that being said, we have a chance to let go of the agenda.
Move forward with the agenda.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. We have a discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Hold the same, motion carries. If there's a clear. Next up is the minutes from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four budget workshop.
Can I make a motion for thirty minutes from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four budget workshop? I second.
Again, we have a motion and a second. We have a discussion, the all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carries. It looks all approved, as written. Next up is the minutes from the August twelfth, twenty twenty-four town council meeting.
Can I make a motion and reapprove the minutes from the August twelfth town council meeting? I second.
We have a motion and a second, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold the same, motion carries. All right, public participation. Uh, we asked that if you wish to speak, that you would put out a request form that submitted to Ms. Wendy, Debbie Clark. Uh, if you have not already done so, place the podium, speak clearly, and speak your full name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to a maximum of thirty minutes per person. Ms. Rachel Weeks, you are up first.
Dear Mayor, Town Council Members, Town Manager, Town Attorney, Town Clerk, City Staff, this is an open letter to whom it may concern. On July twenty-fourth, regarding permit issues, I contacted Mike Sacks, who only works on Wednesdays and usually leaves by noon due to budget issues. The issue being there is no money to pay him for more time. At the end of the conversation, I explained to him that my most, uh, that my current request is that I do permit to turn on my power and water to my private property before my permits were approved. I explained to him that I have to transport water to my dogs every day, and they are already on the property. And I also needed to relocate my camper trailer from Black Prong Campground to my property to save money. I assured him that I would not begin any of the building projects until all permits were stamped with his approval, but that it was imperative that I be able to have access to water and electricity as soon as possible, as I had just three weeks remaining on my current agreement with Black Prong located off South 337. I explained to him that I was paying close to $2,000 a month and could not afford that any longer. My plan was to live there at the campground in my camper for two months. That two months had already become four months. My budget had already overspent. Mike Sacks said that he would consult the town council for special permission, but he didn't think it would be a problem. Very nice of him. Uh, on August ninth, sixteen days later, I finally received an email from Ms. Gooday, letting me know that she received my request. She explained to me that she spoke to the town attorney and Mike Sacks, and because of ordinance twenty-one oh four, my quest, my request had been denied. She did not give me a copy of the ordinance at this time, and the council had nothing to do with this decision as far as I know, and she did not mention the council at all. I went back to her explaining again that living at Black Prong is very expensive, and that I had to be off the property by August seventeenth, and I had to pay for another month. Flora had to pay for another month. I reminded her that I'm actively working on my permits for the building of my home, and that I am recently divorced. I explained to her that this is.
You have a minute left.
Well, I actually asked her for fifteen minutes in the email, and she said, sure.
Well, there, honey, when we do the pub thing, you can only get, it says mostly three minutes. So, I mean.
Okay. Well, let's get to the new party, though. This is going to be. She shrugged her shoulders when I said Tony Kukendi probably can't afford to build a house, and that's why she's still in here. She's been bullying Tony Kukendi, who's seventy-nine years old, whose family's from Bronson, and his house burnt down. Her son built her a beautiful porch with a tin roof on the front that goes from top from end to end of this camper. You can tell it's a camper, and it's parked right next door to a single white trailer, and the camper's newer and nicer. She keeps her yard clean, and there is no reason for her to bully, uh, Tony Kukendi. Now, here's the thing. I have nothing against the Stonerford family, but this entire town and all of this council, council know that the Stonerford family has lived in their camper behind Julie Steiner for six to seven years. And if you are going to allow that, then, and you're not going to allow me to live on my property for twelve to eighteen months while I build my house, I will move my camper behind my store, hook it up, and be next door neighbors to the Stonerford family. That's my three minutes.
Do we have anybody else?
We want to discuss that after, after the informational items.
Sure.
See.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
So, who? What did you, what was that, Sue?
She said it's here.
She said it was okay.
Discuss that after the informational items.
Okay. All right, uh, Mr. Wong, you got anything to discuss on this at all?
Well, when the council discusses it, if somebody wants my, my opinion, I'll give it. I've already written my opinion. It's, it's unfortunate, but, but again, not going in length, you can discuss it afterward. The ordinance says what the ordinance says, it's pretty clear.
Then I don't just get three minutes, because I get to rebuttal it. If I gave you all the copy of the ordinance.
No, I'm not going to debate you. I'm not going to debate you, no.
I was a legal assistant for two and a half years, and this does not clarify that it has anything to do with home building. It does not clarify an age cap on the elderly woman. You all can allow the Stonerford family to live in a camper.
I'll stop it.
And I will live in my, on my property, in my camper, under my sole barn wall, I build my house, because I do not fall under this ordinance at all, sir. This was miswritten, it was not written well. I know legal jargon, that's what I did for the attorney that I worked for, Thomas, and divorced the attorney at law.
You should not give any word of that information.
We're going to discuss it after the informational items.
Thank you.
My bad.
All right, informational items. Uh, the used force program workshop is Tuesday, August the twenty-seventh, at six P M. That is going to be here, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Code Defortment Board Meeting is Wednesday, August the twenty-eighth, at five P M here.
And is this in reference to what's in?
Yes.
Or just a regular?
Good man, not just.
Just take this.
One of them, not just.
Right.
Okay.
All right, uh, transition into Medicare Health Insurance and Retirement Workshop is Tuesday, September the third, um, at four P M, is that here also, Sue, or where?
No, that is.
City of Wilkins or somewhere.
Okay.
Yeah, that came from.
Well, okay.
That's good work.
Uh, next, yeah, next town council meeting is Tuesday, September the third, at six P M here.
Do I have a budget before that?
Yes.
Yes, we do have a.
No.
No.
No, we're done the budget workshops, we're being correct.
Okay, okay. Yay. Yeah, all that fun, yeah. Okay, we do have a koozies training is Wednesday, September the fourth, at six P M. Uh, for y'all that don't know what a koozie is, that is our new software that we are doing in order, uh, billing system for the city, for the town. Uh, Nature Coast Business Development Council inaugural State of the County Dinner is Thursday, September the twelfth, at six thirty P M.
And that got canceled.
That got canceled, that email got canceled.
Correct.
Till the spring of the year, okay?
Correct.
Until I have it, so. Uh, then your next two koozie trainings is Saturday, September the fourteenth, at ten A M. And all these will be online, is that, am I?
The training goes here.
Training is here. Okay. Okay, the, uh, Wolfessess and Warner and Wasteland Boston Board Meeting is Wednesday, September the eighteenth, at one P M in Seer Key. Bread of the Mighty Food Bank, Mobile Food Drive is Friday, September the twenty-seventh, at nine thirty A M. The North Florida Transportation Planning Summit is Tuesday, October the eighth, at nine thirty. Bronson, Beautiful Bronson Day Number Seven is Saturday, October the nineteenth, at ten A M. Homecoming Parade is Thursday, October the twenty-fourth, at five P M. And our Trump or Treat is Saturday, October the twenty-sixth, at six thirty P M, and that is at the James Bond Park. The reason why we done that is what to cover the two months in advance, so. All right, Sue. You have the call.
All right, so, Councilor, do you want to talk about Rachel?
Yeah, that's fine, we need to, if we're going to vote on anything, we need to make it since it wasn't technically the agenda under her thing. We need to make a motion for an agenda battle.
Is it on the agenda already?
Just under public participation.
Yeah, that's okay, that's okay. I'm sure.
Okay, so, let me explain my decision, my reasoning for my decision. So, first of all, I was supposed to be there on the council back in twenty twenty-one. The council originally would say to me that there was an ordinance that people weren't allowed to live in a Harvey. When I researched more, it says we didn't have any ordinance. That's when we put ordinance twenty-one oh four, and Rachel referenced, in place, and basically says, allowed to live in Harvey unless there is a non-self-imposed portion, like whatever, twenty ten, so your house burns down, pleasant hurricane or something like that. That's the only thing that this town currently has, holding our own licenses, type of recreational vehicle, that's the only thing we see right now, okay, at the moment. Now, because of everything going on with Tommy Petey, I didn't feel comfortable giving this, that, that we're in twenty-four, I don't know, or does allow the county after to make a ninety-day exception, ninety days at a time. So I can do a three-month exception, and then in those three months, reevaluate the other three months. I didn't feel comfortable with this, Tommy Petey, and all, thinking it forward, unless we want to, maybe that's a city. Now, how, we are, we are, we are, we are, maybe to pass something in their code of fortresses that allows people to live in a recreational vehicle on a temporary basis based on construction. So, I gave you a copy of, I don't know, your, your packet. It says temporary use is prohibited from construction. Temporary uses to directly related to necessary to support or conduct construction may or may not be on a construction site during the time of permanent, if it's already decided. So, Lady Connie does have this in place, we do not. Again, the only thing you, if you look at the town council, if you go right now, since I've been representing people, the only thing that comes up is ordinance twenty-one oh four, maybe passed, says you cannot live in one unless the town ever gives you this ninety-day warranty. That is the only deal I have, only I can go by. I think you guys want to come up with, you know, something that's yours, that you can, and again, that's why I didn't make that decision again. I think the consultant would hold, Mike Sacks would be official, and it's reform, and we all agree with it, and this is related to, based on what's the law. Rachel, you want to take it from there?
Well, I think you basically said it. It says that when the hardship is self-imposed, which is a very tightly defined term in Florida law, then you are not entitled to these exemptions and, and permissions. Self-imposed means, well, let me put it this way. It means that the hardship isn't because it's too expensive, because you want to do it and you can't. When you're in a situation that you created yourself, no matter how sympathetic the situation might be, it is not the kind of hardship that is recog, uh, that is recognized in land use attorneys.
Sir, my divorce is none of your business. No, my divorce is none of your business.
Rachel, please.
You've made an initial.
Mr. Park, please listen to me for a moment.
He has a voice now, okay? Let him finish.
And then you, you.
He's being very much respectful of me.
But I remember the bar. We can get through this, okay?
Yes.
But he is explaining our situation by that, okay?
Explaining his opinion of my personal life.
No matter. We have a fine document, it is in black and white, okay? It specifically reads how this is defined.
I gave you a copy of that, and I highlighted everything, and you gave all the powers to the town manager.
Look, I have to go by.
Saying that my issue is not in hardship, and he has no idea, but I've been told.
It doesn't matter, it's not the kind of issue.
Which is why you don't need that seat if it doesn't matter, if the people of Bronson don't matter to you. If the people of Bronson don't matter to you, then you don't need to be in that seat.
Breathe, breathe, we cannot, and we will not breathe, deal with this in this manner, okay? I would hope that you can understand the situation that we have here. The situation is this, we have a set of guideline rules that we have to go by, okay? Those guidelines are for everybody, and I cannot, as long as it is there, I'm not the enforcer, okay? I'm just the one that sits here and says, yes, this is what we have to do. We have a set of guidelines that we have to go by. Those are, what we are, that's why, if we lose that, then we lose everything, okay? I cannot, and here's a section. If you want us to do this in this manner, then we are discriminating against anybody else that comes by, okay?
I have outlined in here how you are already discriminating, because you have allowed Julie Stonerford to live in that camper behind the restaurant on commercial property.
If you want to file a motion with us about personal questions, nobody has.
I'm not complaining about her.
Nobody has complained to her.
My complaint is about the manager, and if you're not going to worry about Ju- Ju- Julie Stonerford, then I will move my camper behind my store and plug up there. Me and my children will have Christmas, Christmas tree and everything, it'll be beautiful. Y'all can stop by.
Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor, I know this was supposed to be submitted by the board, yeah.
Can I, you're good. Give my recommendation for, he goes.
Okay.
I say we need to mirror the, um, county's ordinance, because it should, couldn't have said about that beginning of it.
You have to do a major ordinance to do that.
Huh?
You have to do it.
That's something we can work up and have. You gotta do a, you gotta do a first reading, second reading, all that for that, right?
Right. You have to start from scratch, yeah.
I'll just go ahead and, before he even talks on the making motion.
Okay, well, then my question here is, what about the legal prospects? They've already got it placed, based on the other.
Well, based on the ordinance, she's on the side to do what she wants to do. What, uh, what Tyler was saying is that if you amended the ordinance to create a, an exception for that kind of situation.
Do you create a reverse situation back there?
Not the same situation.
Not the same situation.
Uh, it would depend, case by case, whether, how the ordinance was drafted, and what meant it, so. But, uh, other than that, other than by, call it the nuclear resort, uh, it, it's clear, I believe, that, that what the lady wants, despite all of the litrations and all of the vehemence around it, is not entitled to do under the ordinance as it's presently drafted. That much I can tell you, you have to go ahead.
Okay, so the only, in your recommendations, would the, the only alternative to this be to change that?
Absolutely, you can vary it by emotion or something like that, you can change it, you always have the power to draft ordinances.
I make a motion, we amend ordinance twenty-one, measure four, to include new construction builds.
With a ninety-day, don't you mirror?
You're not going to build a house in ninety days, I say we do six months, and then if they, if the house isn't known in six months, they come, they go back to the town manager, and the town manager can just.
But in ninety days, they can come and show. It needs to matter what the county sees.
If they have an active permit, it doesn't matter where they're at. That's, they're in the process of voting, they have an active permit. So, I say it's six months, do mimic the county's, exactly.
But the county says ninety days.
Ninety days.
Yeah.
Meme the county's made it easy, that's my motion.
Is there anything else that we can put in there before we?
And he needs to help all the elderly women whose houses burned down, yes. She needs protection.
That's not the.
My motion is for the new construction.
I, 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 I would, I would agree second that we need to mirror what the county says, so it's all one thing. I agree.
So we have a motion to say.
I have a motion, that's right, any other discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will start the process, I need to get the legal, look at all the legal outside, is that the same?
Yeah.
And, uh, we should have to start the process, uh.
That's what the county thinks, yes.
I, I am.
So what do we, what do we tell the motion, or tell the ordinance is, um, passed, we do a verdict, so I'll say for thirty days.
September, you don't have a meeting.
Your ordinance is, is in effect unless or until.
Well, so, but the amendment wouldn't be effective until at least a month, correct?
At least, yeah, yeah. Not too much you can do about that.
Oh, well, I can pull my camper behind my store and tell them, come visit me, Stephen. I've got to go. You are such a rude and disrespectful man.
All right, well.
Ain't nothing we can do about it.
You know what I'm saying, I'm trying to.
Jamie, you have to.
I'm trying to figure out my timeline for the, for the amendment.
All right, Jamie has to, come on, he wants to speak, so he's.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I just got back from being gone for two weeks, and I've got a little sore throat, so excuse that. Um, not COVID, I got tested yesterday. Um, twenty-five years ago, we had embarked on something that people told us that we couldn't do, that's the town. And that was to take over the county building departments, roll, again, having our own building department, Robert was on the council all the time. It was so hard to work with the county. For anything back then, you remember Robert, and all you would have to go through, and they just made it so hard for you to be able to get permits ready. I'm a building contractor, I've been in one for twenty-five years, my daddy was one fifty years before that. I pulled some permits, quite a few permits for the county, I'm not sure if we've done any besides this one, or the town of Bronson, or. But what has happened from just my being on the side trying to help my niece is that the city's building department now is much harder to deal with than the county. The county, you get a permit the same day. We do it, we do that all the time.
Well, we were just having that conversation.
They make it real simple. And y'all, if y'all will take a chance to look into it and talk to other people, they gave Rachel this things that she needed to do, and she did them, and she submitted them, but then they came back and told her she needed to do some other things, too.
And there's some patient, what now?
That was for the flood, I know exactly what she's talking about. It was, she's in a flood zone, and the.
They even said she had to buy her land, which I think is about sixty-something acres.
I don't know, but you can't, you can't build a, building on something of.
Ma'am, I live on the river, and you can build it directly in a flood zone.
No, that's what I'm saying, I know, yes, but.
It's got to be a separate parcel.
It's got to be a se, it, it has to be a separate parcel, and there has to be extra plans submitted, and the original plans did not, that were submitted, did not include the flood plan, because I don't think anybody was aware that it was on a flood plan when it was submitted.
So up until this point with this permit, we've never looked at flood zones being part of an issue?
No, but the new B map, and the map just came out, which is, we just haven't even figured flood map, so.
But anyway, you can still build in, you can even build on the river, or on the water. You just have to meet the restrictions to go with that. So what I'm saying is, we did it twenty-five years ago to try and make it easier for people, and now it's become harder for people. So, it may be time to look at my.
Well, it, it.
It's on the agenda.
And, and it is, it is, if we are looking into this, but let, let me tell you some of the things that are going on behind this, this is for the general, always for everybody, okay? Uh, as much as, I mean, I'm sitting on this board with this bottom thing, it's going to be. The main reason for that thing, for that sort of thing is because of the B map upcoming. And that is this, if you build a house in this, right here, and you are not able to hook up a section, you will have, I mean, up to sue. What's the date on that, twenty?
I think it's in fact now, I think anybody.
If you're in a B map on less than an acre, you have to do the new section.
No, that acre doesn't even have.
No, yeah, now there's only one section of Bronson, the entire city of Bronson except.
I don't know, that's, the section system is, will be, very quickly will be twenty-nine, you know?
My was forty for the river.
Yeah, so, and here, here's what, here's what you're getting into, and what we're seeing, and all these studies, everything we're going to, is that is, this is just getting more and more and more. Here's where they're going to hit you, if this is taken away from this county, it's not going to be there for extension anymore, it's going to be D P. And even though they're going to be working on that, it's certainly down there. Here's what they can, if they come to your house, and you do not pass, and then you have to get it inspected twice a year, and I think it's five hundred dollars each time to get it inspected. So that's another thousand dollars a year that you got to spend on this. And then, on top of that, if they come there, and you don't get it inspected, or you don't pass, it can have you thrown out of your house. They can come into your property and have you removed.
The county does that.
The county can't do that.
Yeah, county doctorate does.
They can, they can tell you that, you know, you got this to do it, but they cannot physically remove D P. So, it's like, these are becoming our stories of mine, and I wish I could change this stuff, and it's just like Rachel's situation. My situation with this is right here, that's a tough situation. I understand that she's in a financial burden situation because of other things, I hate to say this, but that doesn't come into the picture, okay? The fact that she's got a divorce, the fact that she's, you know, had to sell her home, had to do all this other stuff, that doesn't come into the picture. The law and the rules that we have to go by are set in stone right now, until we change them. Now, we have set that motion, but now.
The things that we have done, though, in the past on something similar to this, back when I was on the council, and you were on the council with me when we've done this, is when people approached us, we used our authority that we had to say, okay, this doesn't cover it, but we're going to make it cover. So for right now, we're going to grant you ninety days to get your, to set up. There's no reason you should be able to set up.
Today, back, and I hate to say this, twenty-five years ago, things were a lot more civil back then, okay? We could do some things, and we could get away with it, okay? Today, on the same breath, I can't even let somebody come on my property today because I'm scared to death, because somebody's going to sue me for something that involves.
I, I apologize for Rachel's behavior. Rachel's, Rachel's in a different place than a lot of people are right now.
I understand.
And she feels like the world is against her, she feels like you're against her because it goes back to Berlin, and maybe even me, I don't know.
Where, where, where?
I've never.
I didn't have to be against Berlin.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just telling them to help, I'm telling them.
I don't even know that woman, she just, you know, wants, you know, down to me, I'm not going to let that happen.
Nobody can ever say that he is not protecting the town of Bronson and not doing what is a legal, and such, and such, and that's why he has all.
But if you're going to move towards that, you do have the authority to give a ninety-day temporary.
We do, we do, exactly. But, just like what I asked Mr. Wong a lot ago, we have to look at the legal aspects of this here also because of, you know, script or a situation. We have a case right now, it's been spoken of tonight, Tony Kukendi, okay? Mr. Kukendi's got a bad situation, problem, when it is, is the timeframe that's been going on for seventeen years, okay? That's not called, okay?
Well, she, she's going to start building her house the minute that she gets her permits.
Listen, I'm not faulting her for that, okay?
Try to do that.
We've all done that.
And she's all, she's waiting on everybody else to do it, but.
And I understand that, and I, but what, but what she, she has to understand is, I cannot break the rules for her because of her, who she is.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to do that, but you, but you do have the authority to grant a temporary.
And I was turning more of a mic in just a minute about that, but. And I was turning more of a mic in just a minute about that, but on your thing of what you already brought up, the, um, David Meyer, county doesn't want to have a discussion about the county doing permits
I'm not telling you yet, this is
I have said for the last however many meetings, that something has to be done about our permanent situation, about the turnaround on it. I've said something about it and so
Well, she started her process several months ago. And she still doesn't have
But let me just be clear, her behavior in that office is unacceptable.
Idris.
Hands down.
Idris.
And in here, it was, it was not as bad as in the office, but it, it almost, um, let me tell you, there's not a person here um, in her family that we have not wanted to pull for. But it makes it extremely hard to pull for somebody if they're
But just, just know though, with what she's going through, we've, we've all been through stuff.
Yes.
With what she's going through, that's not who she really is.
Right.
That behavior is not
I was in the office and the police were almost called on me.
But it's
And the way she spoke, if it happens again, I will call the police and she will be removed, because that's how bad she's
I understand that she's, there's, there's a place, I mean
Or she can have you come in and speak for her and handle it for her.
And I would like, I would like
Yeah, because you're not disrespectful, you, you understand that it, you gotta give some respect to get some respect.
And we spent an hour after, after her behavior in that office, and I've known Rachel for twenty years, after her behavior in the office, me, Sue, and one of our other employees sat down and tried to figure out how to make it work. But the behavior is unacceptable and it, it's, I will say, Sue can back me up if she wants to, it will not be allowed in our office anymore.
I totally
And that is not Rachel.
And you know back, you know back in the day when I was here, that I wouldn't put up with it.
And, and like I say, I try to keep, I try to give everybody their half the time to talk and I try to give everybody their safety in here. You know, we, we just can't You gotta be sick. And that's a point, that's it. I'm just, Idris, okay?
She just thinks the world is against her right now.
Well, the world's not against
At least, at least
I'm not against her, Tony Kikensy or anybody else.
And, and do, use your position to help people when you can. That's what you're here for.
Right.
We did it, we did it many, many times, and you can still do it to that.
Is Mike on there?
Mike's here.
So is there, um, since we are moving forward with the amending the ordinance to allow new construct, to allow them to stay on a new construction, is there a way to, um, temporarily allow it until the amendment is?
Like a third, like a
Yeah, like a
There, there's, there's no provision that I'm aware of that would give you that authority. I mean, you can turn your head the other way if you wanted to, but that's what you'd be doing. There's, there's not
Is there anything that says you can't? That's what we always look for.
Well, if, if the authority isn't there to do it, then you can't do it. I mean, the existing ordinance says specifically what you can do and what you can't. And I, I don't think the authority is there. I mean, you're asking for a legal opinion, I'm sympathetic as the next person, but I've got to tell you what, what the legal opinion is. Uh, I would like to hear, what is Mike, is Mike on the
Yeah, I'll go ahead and ask him.
What do you think?
Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Is it muted or is it
Mike, can you hear us?
I don't know, he's not muted. Mike, I'm gonna call your cell phone, hold on.
The only reason I'm asking if there's a way to do it before we've amended this, or the ordinance was amended, because it's a totally different situation than
A proper, I'm talking, technically ordinance is amended, although it is, is something out there in the east. Uh, it doesn't have any effect whatsoever, other, the existing ordinance is in effect. And under the existing ordinance, there would be no authority to do it. I mean, you're asking legal question, there's no legal answer.
Your mic get messed up?
That's, that's why I was asking.
Okay. I'm gonna put, wait, hold on, talk loud, I'm gonna put you in the middle so everybody can hear you, his mic's not working.
Tyler, why don't you ask him exactly?
Yeah, just to Uh, my question was, we already made the motion to amend the ordinance to allow people, um, that are in the process of building new construction to, uh, live on the property in a recreational vehicle. But until that will be, since that'll be at least thirty days down the road, is there a written, I, I know it won't be a variant, but is there a way to allow somebody to do it until the ordinance, the new amendment takes effect? Okay. So I Okay. What about, um, will it be the same situation with the water deal? I'm just trying to cover everything here so I know what's going on.
Now, the point of the water disorder, you know, one of the unusual things here is, you know, don't you tell these guys that it goes through the city and their ordinance and stuff like that, you get something through a building special. And the show their story that I have, I'll say, tonight, we are, I mean, no one's gonna back their after the door, until this, this is passed. Again, uh, I, I, I've probably watched about the city of three, causes like this, I can only tell you from building, uh, the department's schedule, I'm gonna allow the temporary power, temporary R V. Uh, it's all features to, uh, to make it access to that location, the temporary goal, that's the name of the builder. And, uh, it's, it's, uh, toxicity to work, uh, R V into the situation, things like that. Uh, I can allow that, I mean, to say that, you know, I'm just, you know, uh, if you would not uh, I think it was the city's to water, you know, okay, not yet.
There's only water?
Only water?
Or is there sewage?
Only water.
Water?
Water.
Only water?
Do you get a section system there, there again?
Yeah.
Does that, but the bill, you know, to give the, to water, we have to get that process started. Uh, a lot of this is, kind of, in, in, far, where the building official places, right, during the state, it's, it's still, there's a possibility of the developer in the building, or they're gonna get for a, to be a, to be a, that, that doesn't help them to, uh, be, uh, do anything that you wanna do if you're, so you're still getting a qualification, there's a, like, uh, these these stages, but I have it so raised, they're not gonna, so they think they'll be, uh, uh, try to do a favor for the division, but this if you have to, uh, get, real, very, uh, big, the building division, you have, uh, uh, the, uh, team to go in, I can allow, as well, the the stuff that's, if they, if they know where their, uh, you know, their, their, for occupation, things like that, if they see to be done out there, we can come in here, we can go, uh, go, uh, to do, so we can even have skills, we can out there take a shot and know where the, uh, elevation is, or we can even get started on the subject system, I for, for the situation. And what gives me the surprise is that building, for that application, something, and the, the documents that I have on trial, uh, they still say that this is a, tends to be like, uh, you know, with, with, uh, we, we can get, the best we can do is, what's our, to get the people in there, the, the subject system's gonna have to go through, even county council.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I was just, any, y'all, any questions?
You know, typically, I guess, the, or, 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 things like that, uh, that, that's what I do ordinary, to have temporary powers, and, uh, during construction.
Okay. But, and nobody else got any questions? Okay. All right, well, you just gonna leave one for your friend?
Building Department, yeah, the, the Building Department, and, and, uh, uh, do you have any questions? In terms of the, the building special on here?
There's a question.
We're gonna wait for an occasion.
Uh, do you know, one of those, might, what, kind of, for some?
I don't think, it's not if it's any owner, such as recreational vehicles, I don't think it really matters.
Okay. Just, uh, I just make sure it's not supposed to be a certain time. I'm bringing up the problem, it's not What's your name?
No, I was looking for the county's
Oh, yeah.
County's back.
So, her question was, does it have to be a specific, does it have to meet certain qualifications to be considered a recreational vehicle? Is, is there any specifics on what that has to be?
Hold on, Mike's gonna answer it. Go ahead, Mike.
Okay. Okay, that's what, okay, that's what, that's what they want to hear. Alright, I'm gonna hand you back over to the winner, we need you, we'll call you back. Thank you.
Okay, if, um, anybody has a question, I'll call you back. Alright, thanks, Mike.
So, that was mine.
Can I just say that, that is building official in my opinion.
Yes.
I've talked to him, and he's been very nice over the fall. I don't, I don't have anything against him at all. I just, I'd love to see town of Bronson move forward and good things happen.
What it sounds like to me is that the discretion of him, he can allow. Hold it, and then, so, it's not us making a motion or anything saying, hey, you can live there until those ordinance passes. But it's that discretion of.
Just, just to feel a little bit, a little far here, we have looked into hiring, into the extension of more days. Almost a hundred times.
It's a hundred, and like that was an hour, hundred is something like dollars an hour. So, it would double what we, it would double what we pay now.
Well, back in the day, we never made money on the building part.
We make our money off of the house.
We're losing.
No, we're not making any money on it.
Here, the situation here is, is, again, everything's costing more than that, everything. We live out, I mean, insurance is up, just out through the roof. So, uh, with all that being said, it's just the fact, you know, the fact that, yes, we would love to be able to have, and we keep using the phrase, what does Gainesville have, what does that, yeah, I'd like to have a lot of things in Gainesville out, but this is not Gainesville. I don't want to be Gainesville, okay? But, I would, I would love to have some of the stuff that they have the ability to do up there.
Their online permit is.
Well, there we go again, everything costs money, okay? And, and, and that has to be paid for by the taxpayers from town of Bronson.
So, do I understand the inspector right, that he'll go ahead and let her get temporary power pole? And then, can't you come down and pay for a water meter deposit and get the?
Um, I don't, that's.
Actually, that's the law, you have to, because that was great.
Well, no, that's, the law wouldn't be at all, the law, what Wendy will tell you is that she's gonna have to get with Curtis, and Curtis can do it.
Well, Curtis don't just go out and do it, this is the thing, Family Circle Drive, that's their property, property, right? I would think Family Circle Drive has been loaned to the city. We will, we will stub out on our side, but then she will have to figure out a way to get it from the, you know, front line, that field in that corner to her house.
So, she needs to come in and fill out the application?
Yeah, she needs to.
To get water and pay the, pay the, uh,
That, that was gonna be my question.
That's why you didn't go ahead and do that, that way you could be doing it, get a plumber out there, Jimmy's plumber, so he'll come out and.
All of those things are doable, it's just a matter of, like I say, getting the rule, first and foremost is getting this guideline started, this process started.
I agree, it'll save you a lot of. Well, thank you for listening to me.
And I can tell you that sometimes, when we're in the middle of a storm, a personal storm, we don't really see everything that's going on. But she had somebody, I noticed, commenting on her little Facebook video, that was actually the person that reported Tony Kupenzi. So, and they were pushing her to come up to the council and ask for a special provision, and, so, you know.
But you did, I don't know if you knew her mother or not, but she's a lot like her mother.
Miss Faith, I knew Miss Faith very well, um, very well, and I love Miss Faith.
Ain't she?
But, but, um, she, and at that time, she's letting other people play with her.
I don't know, I don't know.
If that's not her.
Faith, Faith served on this board here, once in a while we had to.
Yeah.
She took us to church the Sunday before she passed away. She was a great lady.
We already made the motion to amend the ordinance, that'll be thirty days down the road, we, we need to do it quicker, we have to call special meeting in October or whatever, than we could. But, if it drags into October, since we don't meet, um.
I'll get the electrician down here to, to fill out for the temporary hole. And I'll get her to come in and do her paperwork for a deposit, that way she can get started on that.
Why don't you want a volunteer to come in and do that for her, because it, it was, it was quite the scene, we just may not be ready to experience. We're getting upset about it.
I know, I'll be glad to do it for you.
I would hate for her to call you and talk about, can you come bail me out, so.
Sue, is that, I mean, on that situation, is that? Good? At the discretion, at the discretion of Mike, he can issue everything, so.
He's gonna issue a temporary.
Yeah, he can issue one temp hole, at the discretion of him, since he knows there's new construction, residents going in.
Thank you. That was enough, but.
Go ahead, twenty-four oh-three.
Alright. Alright, this is the second reading of ordinance twenty-four national grade, uh, we have agreed with the record. And ordinance, we're putting in a special action rate for code enforcement, pollination, same procedures, records, and effective. As you recall, we already did a first reading with this, uh, two months ago. Uh, we had to, um, re-advertise it because of the hurricane, so this is your second reading. Um, and again, Florida statute one six-two dot two-two allows the town to have both the code enforcement board and a special magistrate, both of them. And again, the reason I'm advocating for this is in situations like Tony Kupenzi, where the code enforcement board and or the council is having a conflict decision, due to the fact that there's some sort of an existing relationship, so, that's why I'm advocating this for.
Oh, we, do we need to wait till when it comes back to vote? No. Alright, what is the pleasure of the council?
Um, I'm very into it, I'll make the motion to accept the second reading of ordinance twenty-four dot zero three.
I second.
We have a motion to the second, all those in favor, say aye. Put it in, motion carries. Second reading, alright.
I'm, you're right, I'm making the motion, it carries, I'm gonna do it.
And I made it.
I'm very, very, uh,
Magistrate. The magistrate. I do not want to get, put, put that down.
I got you with it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright, Sue, next.
Alright, next is the F Dev water quality restoration program for great home inspection B map. So, I'm gonna keep counting you guys for this whole B map stuff, I know it's, um, well, yeah, I had a meeting with F Dev a few weeks ago, with my soul again, recently did tower. Uh, so again, there's three different grant orders, those they have, all of them, with our twenty-twenty-eight, the town has already used a production of four light. Right now, our total light is three thousand four hundred seventy-four pounds, so it needs to be reduced to two thousand four hundred thirty-two pounds. They are saying that we, we have seventeen million, the subject to sewer grants, to the rest of the rest of the sewer, boys satisfy that requirement, one person, one hundred. But, if we get it, that will satisfy that requirement. The second is by twenty-three, the town must have eighty percent reduction in full nitrogen, so the annual volume three thousand four hundred seventy-four pounds to six hundred ninety-five pounds. The second grant that we did, which was the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant, um, expansion and upgrade, that would also satisfy that requirement. Again, we're coming to that, but, and then, we get those, and they basically said, I explained that thirty-three dollars grants, and they were, they were, they were the grants, and they said, yeah, we have to get it, you guys just have to put in for them every year, every year, every year. And then, third is twenty-thirty-eight, so fourteen years from now, the town must have one hundred percent reduction in full nitrogen, so thirty-four, seventy-four pounds to zero. So, basically, they're gonna be eliminating the B maps, you can get fourteen. Not sure how we're gonna get to that requirement at this point. The two grants alone would not get us there, but again, I want to reiterate that they're the ones who explained to me that regardless of parcel size, the actual hole is located in a B map, and now it's new construction. They have to do the enhanced, they either have to connect to sewer, it is a, or if not, they have to do the enhanced septic tank. It doesn't matter if it's a half acre or, if it's in a B map, they have to have this sewer septic tank. So, I know everybody from all levels thinking, oh, it's over acre, don't worry about it, and, and the overwhelming majority of the Bronx is in B map, probably four of them have, is in B map. So, I just want everybody to understand that this is coming down from F Dev, and it's a very serious requirement, obviously.
Hmm, hmm, and, it's, to reiterate what she has just spoke about there, and this is, this program that they are pressing, that we will have to do, is, there's no question about it, it, it's been mandated, so to say. And without, uh, and, and they keep saying, well, if you get these grants, just like Sue just said, if we get these grants, we will be able to accommodate them two-thirds of this. But that's an if, we don't know whether we're gonna get this money or not, we're hoping to, uh, because the town of Bronson's citizens cannot face this out of, if you did, you'd move, I tell you that right now, based on this. So, I, I, I really, truly, I don't see how, how this is going to float, the reason why is because the mandates that they're putting on us. But, so far, it's, it's gotten plenty of, plenty of wind behind our sails, so, we'll see. That's why this, uh, us expanding our sewer system here is so, so very important, because, how is somebody that is only fifteen, ten, situation, scenario, okay, where you are living off of, you know, I, we don't even talk about that, but that's what I'm saying, then they have to put one of these in. And then they have to have it inspected twice a year. Uh, so that's a thousand dollars a year, for the seven, plus that, the septic, if you, if you have, do you have any vehicles with it yet?
Well, when I called the DEP, which was last Tuesday, they were so confused about it, they wanted to.
Jimmy, do you have any vehicles with it or not?
Yeah, I have.
I've heard everything.
I'm not starting to enforce it yet, but I'm never gonna get lawsuits because of it, because I live on the river, and it's the same thing. The only problem is, everybody that lives on the river that has these, they don't work. These enhanced systems.
Yeah, they're, they're not.
They don't work, the man that invented them, went and did them down in the islands, in the Bahamas, and nobody knows where he's at.
So, did, is yours above ground or on your?
No, it's underground.
Okay.
So, and, and you're right, there's gonna be some legal structure involved.
So, you have to pay, you have a lot of maintenance that has to be done on it?
You have to pay, like, John Sektic or somebody like that, they charge four hundred dollars a year, and they are your operator. But I can tell you, even that big restaurant that's on the river, if you go look at his boxes, they're all turned off.
Right. Alright, Sue, next.
Okay, next up is town of Bronson's special foundation. Okay, so first and foremost, I did exactly what you guys asked, and I went back to Mark Royer, and basically, after turning it down, to, to, to acquire, for people to have, also to get insurance, providing the event department, out of fire, and other participants. And then, most importantly, if there wasn't loss incurred, and it wasn't, didn't have any, toward liability, the policy would tap that. And, sure, Mark Royer will, probably, guys, provide a, like, place, legal explanation, which is so much, mature terms, definition, so. So, um, I, I, I read that application today, I want to look it down, but, um, and look at these wonderful, the verse section, and it says, the average of two hundred four hundred. So, we're listening, they're only doing this for the town. I mean, you basically want to be cleaning hole, forty-five people, and then you're concerned about people having a, or a birthday party, or a wedding shower, or whatever, you know, money to, to charge for it, but it's a small gap. So, obviously, we can change that, um, to be whatever it wants, but unfortunately, F My Team was super helpful, um, answering those questions, and the writer was super helpful.
Did we, did we ask them if we could sell them a policy under ours? Did we ask them if we could sell the people who would be required to have a, a policy under ours? Wasn't that an option? Like, did, did, I can't remember who said that, the last meeting we. If you could sell.
An event.
You can sell event insurance under our poli, under our liability policy?
Well, not if I see, if they defi, if I see an office, which is now, is, that they go through, under the trust, and, and some sort of event, and a halt, and then they just gain town of Bronson, and that's additional insurance, and, and they have covered the whole house.
How expensive is that?
Event insurance?
Yeah.
Hot in order, also.
Yeah, hundred and forty-five. Um, I would definitely like to see the number more, like, gathering's more of, like, fifty people plus at least. Because it's easy to have thirty, kind of young, turn around, a birthday party.
Well, first of all, you gotta get something that's feasible, uh, we're not gonna have birthday parties that cost two hundred and fifty dollars, you gotta have one, you go talk to somebody passionate, uh, that's just my personal opinion. I'm not gonna pay two hundred and fifty dollars for insurance, James got a pork, and he had to pay two or three hundred dollars for a chicken, chicken side, or whatever, whatever you wanna bounce house, or whatever you wanna call it, you know? So, uh, I mean, I'd do anything for my friends, so, but there is a little bit of common sense comes into play here, and that's why.
Are y'all still insured, you're part of the cities, you got the best insurance there is?
Well, I know, but maybe it's just getting to the point right now, like I say. Sue, how much do you say is going up since, since you started here, the insurance?
Our attorney?
Yes.
I started at fifty thousand, right now it's a hundred thirty-three thousand.
How long have you been here? About four years?
Four years.
Well, that's why I said, at least, at least fifty people or more, for you to be required to have insurance, they have to pay at least fifty, I would put it.
And I see where you.
I think that's what you're trying to get, what you're trying to get is when you have water to gather, and you're, you're.
Right.
They have some liability, you said, we don't want any liability, so, I think fifty's good for it.
Fifty, what, what do y'all think?
I think that's a good number, but I like, um, if we had, with the application, maybe some kind of handout or something that told them where to go to get event stuff from, like, for example, if you were having a family reunion out there, you might not really know how, where to go to get event insurance.
The city's not allowed to do that, we can't show.
Can't recommend, you can't recommend.
The city can't recommend any business.
But you could have a brochure listed with all the insurance companies.
That's, that's, but you'd have to list all of them, every single insurance.
Or the top of insurance.
So, if a new insurance company.
Yeah, or just list the type, you know, brochures and H U D.
Keep, to keep that areas at the top of insurance, because, you know, there's a string of different kind of liability insurance, as long as my book, my arm, couldn't get. It all has to do with how they pick each other, you know, just like you said, and what type of the beach you want. It's just like, it's just like a swimming pool, those people that don't swim the pools today. We've got one up, my mom and daddy's house is, it, it, it now has frogs and turtles, and the reason why, because insurance requires us to put vents over it, and all this other stuff, and she just refused to do it.
As a practical matter, if somebody is having an event with, say, fifty or more people, the people involved are gonna have car insurance, house insurance, life insurance, they're gonna have an insurance agent somewhere. They're gonna have somebody that can call and say, we need event insurance for this event, and that person will spear that really, I think.
And, and, right, and I think, like I said, I think it's, the key thing is to give them the top of event insurance, and they will be there, and, and, that would help them a lot, I think.
I think if something like, or it's just a certificate of insurance of at least a hundred thousand, you wire, I can say, please contact the local agent to discuss the event policy.
Yeah. I don't, I don't.
That's perfect, yeah.
I think, I think fifty's a fair number.
If, if that's gonna be it, you should vote on that, because it's gonna go into the ballot.
Does everybody else agree with that number?
Fifty is fine.
I make the motion that we do the special events application with the gathering of fifty or any more people, look for insurance becomes a requirement.
I say. We have a motion to the second, all those in favor, say aye. Put it in, motion carries. Alright, Sue.
Alright, another question, another question. From the parade one, throwing candy is prohibited.
Does it say that?
On the parade side, the parade side of special events application, where it says throwing candy is prohibited?
Yes.
You can leave lollipops out there, because those take eyes out, but, throwing a toots, throwing a toots rule, I never heard of it.
So, we are getting really close, um, to, on the board, and have, have the A B M, some, I prefer new A B M, um, so then actually going out, like we call it, commercial water meters. So, there's a couple pages on your packet, the first one, uh, basically is, uh, what they're sending out, which is that, as soon as town of Bronson's will be done before, they're gonna be replacing all of their commercial water meters. On the day of the upgrade, they're gonna come by your door, with the upgrades, this is gonna be, for all thirty minutes, if they go near to the door, if they're gonna start the installation, if they see that the water meter is abused, then they'll come out. And then it says, support the use of water, make sure you flush it for a period of five minutes to break water. And then, provide experience, water of the line, desiccations, sediment, and most importantly, not have to do a boil or, so, that's what we're gonna send out. So that's what we're going to send out before they actually start a door. And then after it's completed, they're going to send out this little paper here, that basically says, you have to leave, water meter down, no additional action required. And so they, they're going to be on the water for two minutes, and then if you have questions, you can contact them. All, there's also going to be a commercial list or something on the website, they explain the same sort of information. They do probably, there'll be some type of a counter, basically, all the commercial water meters, so it's about hundred, twenty, a hundred, a hundred. Very close to that. Any questions on that?
I got any questions?
Nope. All right, next.
Okay, so next up is a conversation regarding the county, county department slash safety safety. So based on what's supporting us, we're going to pull back, we need to go back to the county and ask them if they would be willing to visit the building conference. David Meyer was their, he really affected, came back and said that he is interested in having a conversation, which I'm happy to do. However, he made a caveat there, he said that to their stipulations, this town will continue to do all of the zoning, set back requirement able and. So you have to remember that safety does multiple instances, so I would leave with Mike, I'm going to say morning to discuss, can I do that too? The other thing that they do is they have another farm, they have a few associates that does all the farm, you know, planning, something, set backs. So what David Meyer wants to say is that county will take over, basically, permanent, any inspections, that their market will take over any of that. It would help with planning, zoning, they would call the code enforcement, polish the base level. So we would do that, I just wanted to kind of think about if you guys are discussing with them. They would be willing to help, but they won't do everything the safety is doing.
Say we have the discussion with them at least and see what. What are they doing?
Again, that's.
For code enforcement, well, planning, if, can't have, DeWor, Calvin, whatever, associates do the thing, and we, we work with them already too. Could we just do a straight through them? Would we be able to do a straight through them? The planning.
The cost of it is the issue because my personal opinion, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the majority, the highest part of the cost when you get our safety invoices are the planning and zoning. The building official isn't, I mean, it's a hundred bucks, but it's the planning, zoning stuff that are double, triple, quadruple.
Yes, yes, they charge us, making this up on top of my end, sure, like, okay, remember how we're doing the rezoning on five four five?
East around that way. Oh, yeah, Hatland.
Just for them to do that staff report, I'm going to say it was nine hundred dollars. What do you, do you remember?
It, it was, it was quite a bit, it, it was up there, like seven, eight, nine hundred dollars.
And unfortunately, we just don't have anybody at the town hall that has any, something planned. Maybe we just will have to have that done by somebody because we can't get back to that point.
Yeah. Okay, well, you, you carry on your discussion with the county and find out, so we'll have all the facts. And I just have to discuss this down the way, because like I say, it's all about dollars and cents right now. We are mandated to do all this stuff in some facet or another, so the most plausible way we could do it, the most feasible way we could do it is really good. Uh, I wish, like I say, I wish we could do some of the stuff that games related, but we don't. The cost compared to.
So just to be clear, so you want me to keep with David to just see what he can do and what you would charge or what you can't?
Yeah, yeah, I would just, it, it, just for, just for curiosity, I say.
Okay. Good. All right, then the last thing on my list is you've got a copy of the summer edition of the corporate league newsletter that I finalized last Monday, which should be going out today or tomorrow. The goal is to get it out to the residents for the first koozie training next Wednesday. We are also going to put on the bills, which they'll only be due because they're going to be generated by koozie no longer by K U by starting this month. We'll put little stickers on there that, that give the days of world koozie trainings on before ten forty. So the other thing that we totally mentioned today, is we can now use koozie to do all of our notifications. So she had her late fee list and her show off list this week, she actually did everything directly through. So she's going to call people, it's just a little hook up, basically clicks, click clicks, and it just sends the call off, so that thing's a lot of time. That's all I got.
All right. Curtis?
Well, Jeff, yeah, my time. A whole lot before my skating system, we started working on it two weeks ago. We had a big, we got wires everywhere that has everyone to tell us, give us notification, feel upon. Pretty much everything is going to be doing well, we haven't had any leaks the past two weeks. Other than that, we're just really forward trying to get it fitted up. Talking to my Jerry about the bucket truck, let Sue talk to him, I haven't heard that back from him yet, so that's still going to make him get a bucket truck. Other than that. Hopefully the inmate work crew guy will get the class for the next two weeks, I hope we get it quicker. Because it's really, really. So hopefully go on getting the, I don't know if I can be this week, maybe next year, probably.
Senator's back.
Tom, this is, is the fact.
This may be actually days, but it's just, just not getting, getting scared of.
I would like to make a comment about the tree damage in the Rosemary Cemetery, I guess there's a lot of that, I've got several comments about that, thank you.
And if you ever seen the, the fence at the cemetery, turns out pretty good.
Turns out real good.
All right, Jim?
All right. Here's the last council meeting, so update you, we hit in July. Had ninety-five calls in July, sixty-one of which were EMS and med calls, and twenty-two were fire related, and eleven were dispatch and canceling. Double missing records, looking good. So far this month, we're at a hundred and ninety-seven calls, six fires, sixty-four EMS. So we've already cheated last month, so we have a few days to go. Everything seems to be going along, we're working on some staffing issues, just trying to get some, get close scheduling, we missed three calls I think this month, so far. Just through lack of anybody being available. The project we're working on is, I'm looking for an engineer with Senator electric to come out and look at our electric situation and see if we can switch our electric system around out there so we can install one generator instead of having to try to do two separate ones out there. They first didn't think it was going to be possible because the distance between the meters, but the actual distance between the poles is only like a hundred and fifty feet. So one, the building goes underground and runs under the building to the other side, so they were looking at that, handled the weight and power to connect. But they're going to come out and look at it, hopefully we'll be able to do that, and we can apply for a generator for, for the whole thing, because we're talking on the building, we'll have power and air, but we won't have water for the sprinkler system that we're required to have in the building. So we're trying to create that and try to get it the cheapest way, because right now, the generator for the building runs about fifteen K, and one for the well is going to be about twenty-two. So we can get one, it'll handle both, I think it'd be a lot cheaper for everybody and probably more meaningful to get a grant. I think we can get a grant for one, I'm not sure we can get a grant for two. So, other than that, just playing along, trying to find electrician to get our exhaust system installed. I had, as an electric come out, and he looked at those units and looked at ceiling and said, how are you going to get involved there? I said, well, that's purely why I'm talking to you, because I haven't been able to hit them up there either. So we're working on trying to get a couple electric companies to come out to us and quotes on that, so we can move forward with that project.
How's the baby box coming?
We've got all the technical stuff figured out. We're still working on access, stuff in the building, we've got a temporary lockbox on the outside of the building, and I've already given the codes to EMS and Sheriff's Department and F H P. Because they come in and use the restroom all the time. So that way.
That's good, that's good.
Yeah. So, you know, at least somebody, because it was originally set up just for myself, and if I'm out of town or. Of course you have them home, because the department told at my house, if you looked at the signal string, it just says S O S. No way to use that at the house. So this way, we got it set up, we got them the correct phone number and the information they need to give dispatch the call, so when the baby box alarm goes off, dispatch will contact it. So as soon as I get, when the officer's back from vacation, we're going to finish the testing and then we'll be ready to go.
Did you get the other door fixed?
It's been a long process, we still have two that are getting some little issues, one of them just out last week, and they said if one door were seven, I think they have to get some more parts. But all the other ones are functioning, one of them's a little hippy, but, you know, different final visions on that when they come out, so we're making big progress. It's a long, broken out process.
And we haven't, we haven't lost any firefighters, right, we just didn't have enough to start with.
We had plenty, it's just, they're volunteers, so it's about.
We've got three part-time people and less than a volunteer, so. Now we're going for a week on vacation, so that's how fast we'll, definitely we'll be done.
Yeah, I think, I think three calls we missed were like seven thirty AM calls, where somebody already left in the night shift and.
Any progress on the cadet program, or is he having a hard time getting a response or do you know?
With that, I'm not really sure exactly, because I know he's got several applications.
Okay, good.
I'm not sure what the status is, he'd be gone perhaps even now.
Okay, he got application, that, that works.
So he, he does have some, um, that we're looking at, so we're opening it up pretty soon.
Okay. I just, I know sometimes that can be a disconnect, so I was just trying to check to see that he's got some kind of response back.
And it's up on our side too.
Okay.
And that's all I got.
All right, Jeff, thank you.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes?
Jeff, sorry.
I almost got off.
Did you want Shannon to work on a great ramp for one of those generators? I know you saw the, you know, signs out before, it was too long to hurt.
Yeah, well, I was hoping to have the engineer out at the end of last week, hope, I will call him tomorrow and find out when they come out and give me an idea if it's even possible to put, put it to one. But if we can't do that, then we'll just have to try to figure out which, which one's more important to start with. Would be the building or the well, I'm assuming it would be the building.
And you're still hopefully retaining that of the current, the current.
Yes.
I just want to make sure because there's issues to organize, I wasn't sure to announce it. Thank you.
There's more?
Uh, I just have one quick question for Sue, something reminded me about the outfit that you taught I works, or however they command it. Did they send the check back, or have they done anything since the last correspondence?
I don't, I have a big.
They called today, I did not speak to them, Vicky took a message, but they did call today.
Yeah, somebody named Jose Lopez, which is going to be required, so I don't know, is that the name of the attorney?
I, I don't think there was an attorney involved, but that, all right, that'll work itself out, I was just. Uh, how many else?
Send the check back, but we're still, we're still working.
Okay. If they keep it, the matter is done, so that's, that's why, okay.
So I works was part of our, is how we put in work orders and stuff, and since we went koozie, koozie does all of that now, so our contract was done when?
It's actually up October, no, was it September? Something like that.
And so we sent them a notice, it said you had to do a thirty day, sixty day notice?
Sixty day.
Sixty day, we sent them a notice, and now the owner is saying that, no, we didn't meet, we still owe them money for the next year.
They're claiming there's a, there's an automatic renewal, and there's nothing in the contract about an automatic renewal. So we gave them the sixty days, and we figured out per deal what they would be applied to for sixty days, and sent them a check for that. We rounded it out plus about twelve dollars, and said payment in full. Question is, if they cash the check and keep it.
Yes, they said that.
And if they, if they don't, they send it back, they're not going to.
That's somebody just dropped.
They're making a grave.
All right, council committee reports, I'll start off, infrastructure, we've got some things going on around here with some new people. Putting together some businesses, or a business, I don't know. We're just continuing to move forward with the water shore. There are a few questions that, and if, if y'all have the opportunity to come to some of these W three C meetings, I would, I would wish that you would, because there's some interesting conversations that take place there considering concerning the water and sewer and especially the future of Bronson, and how we are going to move forward with and how this will affect, just like what Sue was talking about a lot earlier with the D M A and everything, and if that is in place, how those things are coming in. There's some, there's some communications and conversations and very, very, very. How it will affect us for the future of Bronson. If, I'll leave that on. Curtis, do you got anything else that's going on? Or ensure, we can just do it. Appreciate y'all's efforts and, and everything, and that's all I got to share.
Uh, how's the hog situation?
My answer is.
Okay, um, and did we ever get camp, our cameras in trouble?
There was one of, but then they had to go somewhere, so it's.
Okay, you said that.
He's got a computer to look.
Okay, um, is, have we like registered the town for the new Wi-Fi stuff coming through?
We don't, the town in Bronson did not have central Florida, we have to, so no.
You don't have to have central Florida.
Oh, did you register for it? Oh, I thought it was only for central Florida.
Name.
She is, she is, she threatens.
Okay.
Every time we get around there, she's.
She's going out.
But you got to remember that the town hall and the park are different, and the fire station is C F B C. Again, they were concentrating their efforts on C F B C first, and then do it after. So we're going to get a fire station.
Well, I just want to make sure we was on the, on the list, I know they're still doing residential, because like, um, it only takes, like, they set mine up in less than thirty minutes. And they actually, like, I scheduled for like a week, one week, and they called me on Saturday and said, could they come Sunday instead of coming Thursday? And then come back to me and say, it was like, oh, you know what, we right around the corner, so we'll just come now, and they were done in thirty minutes.
And we broke up with the T N T?
Yo, which, which they, they send you a, a survey asking you all these questions about you moving and whatever, and it's like, I had to tell the lady, because I answered the phone, I don't know, I mean, answering numbers, I don't know. It took like four times to tell her, I didn't move, we just got different service, well, where'd you move to? I didn't move, I just, you know, they, we have this service in town, so the truth is, it's faster and it's not down all the time, so that was the thing.
We got a better deal. And for y'all that don't have it yet, I'm sorry, because it is fantastic.
It's like she said though, even when you had hurricane, the, your power model went out, but your internet was still working. So the weather doesn't do anything to it at all, it, it was ice cream movies during the whole last hurricane, so.
Tom? Excuse me.
Oh, that's it.
Tom?
Well, I don't really have anything to fire for, I mean. We're still waiting on the paperwork for the new truck, right, and that, and that we're waiting on.
We are waiting on a family check.
Which is being delivered, because that sign, that means. So I will. So I'm going to deliver the check tomorrow.
They call us every day.
They haven't called me no more, so I'm happy if they're calling you.
They, they call us.
I don't see a world where.
Well, I did have one, I suggested to Sue that we get a, a monitor and put it on the wall, so when we have Zoom meetings and we have people that are online, so that you can put it. And then, like, we just, we did a regular Roku TV for our church, the whole thing, with the H G M I card costs like two hundred and fifty dollars, and it makes a difference because they sitting out there and she's on Zoom, they can hear you a little bit, but you can't see it, and so if we had, it, it doesn't have to be a, a set of five inch TV monitor, but I mean, just something regular wouldn't cost us that much, and I think it would make a difference in the meetings.
I like that.
We, we have, we discussed it, Sue and I, Sue, did they ever get back to you with that?
I think it said TV and the express party, they have set it up, it's going to cost us five million dollars.
That's all we, that's absolutely, that's all we get, I said, I said the TV and my brother mounted it, and then I put the laptop to a H G M I card and bam, it shows right there before you do after that, you don't have to do all of that. The laptop is already there, you put it there, you can put.
I'm just joking.
I know.
Me and Sherry.
Well, I know, I asked about, I asked about the camera, it's like, you gotta do what?
See, see the key, you have one down there, theirs, it is, they got mics and everything, four, it's, it's not, I, I mean, it's, if you can, like for instance, if you want to talk, you hit the button. If you don't.
That's how Will's listening.
And Will's listening the same way, they got the monitor up here, it's like a forty-eight or fifty inch.
But she, but literally if we need to until we find out no money to do all these, you can buy a Roku TV and.
That's probably.
And, and some of the places up here, they got two of them, you got one in this corner and one in this corner, so you can do what that is.
It don't even have to, like, the ones they got at the county commissioner's office is like, a blind man can see them, it doesn't have to be that big.
Yeah. All right, I, I would like to make a comment. Tom, I appreciate the fire department's efforts and everything, you don't ever know how great they are until you need them, and I've used them, and my hat's off to this one over here to my right, and that crew that came to the house the other night, they did a fantastic job, it was, uh, it's nice to see a bigger face coming down the hall, they said, so, and the job that he's doing and everything is just fantastic, and I, I just, I commend y'all both on everything, and that's what we're doing out there, so. Mr. Virginia? Mr. Virginia?
Um, uh, did we get any responses from churches about Halloween trip of trummies?
She talked to a couple, but I honestly, it's been kinda hectic the past couple weeks with them being gone, so I haven't even mentioned it or asked her.
Okay.
To be honest with you, I'll find out for Miss Morale.
Okay, um, I did reach out to a couple of payroll companies, and none of them were under thirty dollars on here.
Yeah.
And then I looked up payroll class, and it is pennies, two dollars.
That's...
The payroll class is so, is like, I'm, I wanna say it's like two hundred bucks.
I wasn't, I wa- I wasn't gonna ruin Jeff's vacation with bringing that up, you know?
And so, also, like, some of the payroll companies were so busy that they were like, you know what, at this point, we pick and choose where we wanna go.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna, they're gonna upsell it, see who's willing to bid an extra fifteen grand, so that way they can do it.
I was gonna say that, although I didn't ask for this, but I was gonna say that, um, I think if we wanted to maneuver around money and time and money, um, that if we did it on the Saturday afterwards or the Saturday before, that that would change the date and they wouldn't be as busy.
Oh, like they didn't alter, they did the Saturday after the fourth?
Right. But, and that would open up their calendar, to be honest with you. But the price is not gonna change a whole lot, it's just the availability. So to me, it's just way, when, when I take the tower, because I was like, what do we, what do we usually do? And he sent it to me, and I sent it to the lady in charge of payroll tax, and she was like, "There's no way. There's no way that y'all are getting this for this." But I didn't tell her, we're doing it ourselves. But she was like, "Oh, no, you cannot touch that at all." But anyway, I had to look it. I'm still gonna keep looking, I've, I've contacted like, six companies, and there's a lot of them that, that won't even come this way. Um, also, I did wanna apologize, because I had no idea that you had, um, an issue with the fireworks. I had no idea, so I do apologize for you being put in that situation. I had no clue, and I'm sorry, sorry for the PTSD that probably came. But, um, the, the, um, D O T meeting has been moved, I don't know if y'all all know that, but I already registered for the, if you are going, you have to re-register. Just letting y'all know. If you registered before, your registration is no longer valid, and you have to re-register.
That it?
I think that's it.
Check your notes, check your notes.
All right, thank you. Did it, did he have anything, Franklin have anything that you need?
No, he kinda traumatized me on house arrest again, so he really, he really ain't, and he really ain't.
Well, I, I would, of course, everybody in here, I think, sit, if you haven't heard the conversation while you're in the fence and hadn't been completed at the cemetery.
Yes, but it, I would say, it would be nice if we could get like a little false fence in front right there. Just a little fa- you know, just to church it up, you know what I mean?
Like to the side of the pillars?
Yeah, like, just to, it isn't, it ain't got to be four or five.
Yeah.
You know, like, maybe like a corral fence or something that's...
Or fence, that's in your way.
Yeah, like on the side.
Yeah, a little pillar.
Like in front of the fence that's there now.
Oh, just like add some boards to it or something to make it a little decorative or anything?
Just church it up, like, if we could.
I, 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 I haven't even went and looked at it yet, so I would...
It's nice, it looks nice.
Anything else?
No.
Oh, I knew that.
Any questions to pay those?
And David, you got anything else to say? You're the only, you're the only public in here.
My only public. Well, I know from the time that I spent behind there, it's sometimes rather not easy, but I appreciate y'all coming through to help.
Do us a favor, because we don't want to press the issue any further than to tell her, calm her down, so?
I would. And you want to, so soon as I leave.
And please tell her, like, her issues.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I would.
Any questions?
I said.
The department will be moving the second we pay our bills, all those a favor, see if we find a C N. Those things which you carry, we'll get together.